All right, we are ready now. Great, I'm gonna start. All right, good evening, everyone. It is October 14th, 2014. I apologize for getting started late. We, our executive session ran over a little bit and then we had, we were ready to come over here and begin, but we had problems with our audiovisual that held us up that we needed to wait for. So, we will now get started, so if you could please rise to say the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, everyone, it is our first meeting with Amy Healy, so let's make sure that if she asks us to slow down, or she needs something for us, that we're attentive and so isn't nervous the first time you're with this group. So, Amy, if you could please call the roll.
Mrs. Avanzato, Mr. Bascotten.
Here.
Mr. Serisi.
Here.
Mrs. Clarkin.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Mudge.
Here.
Mrs. Page.
Here.
Ms. Health.
Here.
And student representative.
Amy, could you please go ahead and go over the calendars?
On Monday, October 27th, 2014, the school committee policy subcommittee will hold a meeting at 8:30 in the morning at the central administration building. Tuesday, October 28th, the school committee will hold a business meeting at 7:00 PM here in the North Kingston High School.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to presentations and recognitions. Nope, you don't have any? Okay. Does anybody else have anything that we need to take note of? All right, then that brings us into citizens' comments. We have the, thanks Denise.
Do I have one, sorry?
Mary, do we have any citizens who have signed up?
We do, we have Shelley McDonald.
Hi, everyone, Shelley McDonald, North Kingston High School teacher. I'm here tonight to address an ongoing problem in our school district, and that is the unchecked microwave radiation levels in our classrooms. The microwaves emanate directly from the wireless access points, the Wi-Fi routers, on the ceiling in each of our classrooms. That radiation poses a serious risk to the health and safety of our students, our teachers, and most especially our youngest students and our pregnant staff and students. You, Dr. Auger, and the North Kingston School Committee have been presented with studies and medical and scientific opinion many times over that substantiates our concerns for the health and safety of our students. To date, no apparent action has been taken by you, Dr. Auger, or the North Kingston School Committee to safeguard students against a Class 2B carcinogen. I understand that the district has not found it necessary to monitor the radiation levels in our classrooms, despite the concerns raised by myself, Mr. Mudge, and several concerned parents in our community. I wonder then how it is that you feel comfortable assuring parents that radiation levels are within defined limits, when it is clear that you have no idea if they are. As I've related to you in an email, I do take daily measurements of the radiation levels in my empty classroom. As I've stated in the email, I will be happy to share those readings with the district administration, with the town, and with families. For now, I will try to relay my concern through comparison. Today, I measured the radiation levels in my classroom outside of the school building in direct sunlight and standing 50 feet from an operating cellphone tower on Snuff Mill Road. I found that outside of the high school, approximately 20 yards away, there was no measurable microwave radiation. I did find that a student who sits in my classroom is exposed to three to seven times more radiation during a given amount of time as they would be standing 50 feet from a cell tower for that same period of time. Students in our classrooms are exposed to three to seven times more radiation than if there were a cell tower in that classroom. Furthermore, at the measured levels, our students are not only at heightened risk for cancers, but they may and possibly are experiencing migraines, dizziness, fatigue, anxiety, bleeding of the blood-brain barrier, heartbeat irregularities, poor concentration and memory, and elevated histamine response. These effects are well documented and known to occur within and below the levels of radiation measured in our classrooms. I think that it is time for you to inform parents. It is important for families to know that their children's chronic headaches may be caused by the industrial-grade wireless routers in their schools, or that the recurring sinus infections may be a result of the Wi-Fi in their child's classroom. Parents need to know about the health risks. Parents should know that their children are being exposed daily to a supposed carcinogen. There is enough evidence that it is a carcinogen, that it is classified as a probable carcinogen. Shouldn't that be enough to prompt you to take the supposed carcinogen out of the classrooms? It is also time to inform staff of these risks. There is a percentage of cancer survivors among our staff. Were you aware that the American Cancer Society states that while radio frequency exposure might not cause cancer directly, concern has been voiced that cells in the body that have been damaged by exposure to some other substance might be more likely to become cancerous when exposed to radio frequency waves? Radio frequency waves, microwave radiation, Wi-Fi, all the same thing. So shouldn't this be enough? You, Dr. Auger, and the North Kingston School Committee are responsible for the health and safety of your students and your staff. To date, you have ignored or sidestepped our concerns. You've tried to intimidate us and deflect our criticisms. I understand that to entertain the notion that you made an under-informed decision that potentially risks children's lives may leave a bad taste in your mouth. However, I want to know that I intend to continue to raise awareness in our community and of this committee, because I have serious concerns for the health and well-being of my students and my colleagues. To date, you have refused to address these concerns. However, my intent is to give you the information that you need, so that you won't be able to say that you didn't know. Are there any questions?
Thank you. No, we're not, this is citizens' comments, it's the citizens' time to comment and our time to listen. Thank you, Mrs. McDonald.
I think that's not correct with our school department policy.
It is what we've been doing.
No, I don't care. Our school department policy says that I can ask a question.
Thank you, Mr. Mudge. You may ask.
Again, as unethical as you are, you don't follow the rules.
Thank you, Mr. Mudge. Thank you, Mrs. McDonald.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mudge. Jenny Tausick of Sandhurst Town, and then after that Jill Johnin.
Good evening. I'm Jenny Tausick, I'm a clerk at the North Kingston High School and also, I'm also a clerk at Davisville Middle School. I was a little concerned last week when we received a letter in an email from Dr. Auger about some of the things that were going to be on the consent agenda, and one of them was about the administrators moving to a new building in Quonset. One of the things that the letter said was that the town would be taking over the building. If this is so, this is, I'm kind of going around this backwards, but if this is so and the town takes over the administration building, won't the taxpayers still have to pay for the upkeep of the building? So, whether we pay the school department or the town, we're still paying for a building, and you guys will be in another building that we're paying for. Where is this money going to come from? Are we going to have some more outsourcing? Are there going to be more job cuts in the schools? Are we going to have more students per classroom? Where is this going to come from, so some people can have a nicer office? And if you're going to have some savings on buses, as you said, shouldn't that money go to programs or items that directly impact students rather than administration? Also, rather than you getting more modern areas to work, wouldn't it be better to spend money on better places for some of the people that have to work in the buildings? The speech therapist at Davisville Middle School services children in a storage closet in the library. The psychologist and social worker share an office with two other people. This doesn't seem right. This doesn't seem right that we're spending money to give better office space to people that don't even, that they're not even with the children. Also, if we have other money to spend, shouldn't we start thinking about putting new computers in the high school library, so that when the kids come in in the morning, and these are the kids I see every morning, can print out their papers? We have printer problems every day, we have antique computers, or we could also spend more money on library books. I'm sorry, if we have extra money to spend, let's put it towards the kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Jill Johnin?
Good evening, Jill Johnin, 102 Side Out Drive. I too am concerned with this lease agreement for the administrative offices and spending over $100,000 a year on a cost that may not be necessary. I feel that the money would be much better spent towards programs that have directly enhanced the education of our children, such as lowering the class size of the first grade classrooms, implementing full-day kindergarten, a variety of other things that have direct impact on the students. In looking at the packet today, it looks like the capital improvement program includes a facility condition analysis. So it seems like the administrative offices should be included in that analysis and that study, and then as you look at all the buildings, it can be prioritized along with the rest of the buildings and in condition of everything, and at that point, you know, see where it stands on the list. But to commit ourselves to a lease, spending more than a half a million dollars over the next five years, just seems ridiculous when that money could be directly enhancing the education of our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who did not get an opportunity to sign up for the citizens' comments who would want to speak? All right, thank you very much. Great, that brings us to superintendent's report.
Thank you. I'd like to use my superintendent's report to address the issue of the new office space lease. It is item C2 on your agenda, but I'd like to use, because it's part of the consent agenda, I'd like to use some time now to talk a lot about some of the details.
I'd like to bring that action item about the...
Mr. Mudge, we're going over...
Excuse me, I'd like to bring that forward and speak to both of those at the same time, please.
Well, we're going to let the superintendent give his report, and then after that, if you would like to make your motion, you may, but right now it's superintendent's report.
As you know, the current administration building on 100 Fairway Drive was erected in 1968 and was meant to be a temporary building. At this point, the building has outlived its useful life. Its heating system is electric and extremely inefficient, costing the district a lot of money. The cooling system consists of just window box, AC units, is very, also inefficient. The roof is in need of replacement, the windows are old and drafty, and the interior is worn out, it's old, torn carpeting, et cetera, et cetera. While, you know, some of the discussion tonight already has been about, you know, steering dollars toward the kids, I certainly understand that, and we have a capital plan on the agenda tonight that certainly does a lot of that, and there's been a lot of spending on the high school recently. There was a bond on one of our middle schools, and there's been a lot of upgrades in particular schools, and there's a big push right now for technology as well. This is also a need, and it's a need that has a lot to do with saving money. You know, as of April 23rd this year, I started with Mrs. King to talk to the Quonset Development Corporation. We talked, we looked around the district to find available office building that may fit our needs. With the move now for special education, the clinical day program, over to the Davisville Elementary Building, it gives us an opportunity to look at the other functionality in that building and to make better use of the D Building. So, what we have in mind, what is being proposed tonight, is the property on 100 Romano Vineyard Way in Quonset, that is right next to the Lowe's, for if you're thinking in terms of, you know, where at Quonset. And that building is being built as we speak. The QDC is able to offer 6,195 square feet of space to the school department administration that can be customized to fit our current needs, including the same type of conference room that we have on 100 Fairway Drive, and space for all of the functions that would not be going to Davisville or would be housed at the D Building, and I'll show you some configuration on that. It would also include $40,000 credit toward office furniture, and it would include electricity, heat, and AC. It is recommended, it is my recommendation, that the committee approve a five-year lease with QDC at the rate of $16.75 a square foot. That's roughly $8,647 a month, or $1,003,000 roughly a year. This results in increased operating expenses, approximately $50,000 to $60,000 per year for the operation of the district administrative offices. Approval of the five-year lease will give the district time to work with the town to determine the feasibility of shared administrative spaces in a different location. Just at this week's town council meeting, there was a lot of talk about the need, particularly after the elections are all settled, to have some long discussions, and meaningful discussions about long-term planning in the district. Right now, we have eight school buildings, many of them are extremely old. Wickford Middle School comes to mind, for example, and not all of them meet the needs that we would have if we were thinking in terms of the ideal moving into the future. Particularly in a district like many in Rhode Island, that is, its enrollment is moving downward, and the trend from those folks that advise us on these issues is that we're probably going to be looking, like other districts are right now, at available space. And so, the possibility of using fewer school buildings comes to mind, again, for savings. So, I'm going to move here for a moment, and if anyone would like, I have a PowerPoint here just to give a sense of the configuration. So, the configuration that would end up in place is that with Davisville Academy being approved, and now the construction is set for that program, our special education leadership, our clinical day program, K through 12, Office of Family Learning, LINKS, and Working Together for Wellness would be housed in that building. For this administrative offices at Quonset, we would be looking for the superintendent's office, assistant superintendent, director of administration, business, payroll, and benefits, human resources, data and registration, and the school committee clerk. The remaining function in that building, namely technology, which is already at the D Building, but would be joined by facilities, transportation, food service, and house the high school boat building and pass programs as they currently do. The timeline for this, if this were to be approved this evening, would be that as of March and April, the administrative offices would begin to move to the Quonset facility, which would be available at that point. June through August, the Davisville Academy construction work will be taken care of, and the clinical day programming would begin in August of 2015, so the special education offices would already be there moving in the summer. And the remaining offices from the current 100 Fairway Drive location would move to the D Building Annex, which is a good location since it is near the maintenance shed, and it is also adjacent to this parking lot, which as you know, parks a number of our buses. So, I just want to reiterate, you know, for this year's particular budget, we will be looking at a one-month security deposit and approximately three months of rent for a total of roughly $34,000 to $35,000. And some of that can, or all of that can be found in savings from where we were budgeting to the changing in the state busing for, out-of-district busing, particularly the Green School, Kingston Hill Academy, and Compass can be used for these expenses now and in the future. So, everything about this is a good opportunity. When we started down this road, our meetings did include the town, and I think there is, I know, there is a lot of support between school committee and town for the idea of upgrading a central office that all could use, that has the right kind of parking, that has the right kind of meeting space, and that is a lot more efficient than the two buildings that we currently use right now, the 100 Fairway Drive and the Boston Neck Road location, which have all seen their days. So, you know, this is an important move about, it literally is about saving money, it literally is about upgrading, you know, the facilities that we use. It's part of the overall plan, and one of the goals this school committee has for me is to begin a process of long-term planning. Part of that includes the central office facility, but also includes all of our schools. And having, you know, this piece settled, it buys us time to make a longer-term plan with the town, whether that is at another Quonset location, or another location in town, period, or part of a larger building plan, that would come down the road, that would require a bond in future years, where it could be part of a project that includes different construction for either a new school or massive improvements to existing schools. We're at a point where our schools need that kind of attention for the long term. It is foolish to continue to spend money on inefficient buildings, and uncomfortable buildings, and buildings that constantly need attention for major maintenance issues, instead of, you know, doing some upgrades at some point. So, that's going to be a larger conversation that's going to be starting very soon, but I consider this to be phase one of this. It's an opportune time, because this particular building is being built right now, and they're looking for tenants, and we feel it is an excellent price, and, you know, if we don't get this price, someone else is going to get an excellent deal. And, like I said, they're at such a point in the construction that they can literally customize it to our needs. So, we can provide all of the offices that we need to make it work, and have just the right sizes and configuration to make things work appropriately. For instance, one of the good things about the Fairway Drive location is the size of the conference room that we have. It's pretty unique. Most districts, when they want to do a significant professional development event, will close a school's library and have educators from the district or from even other towns come to that school, and therefore the kids are not using that library for the day. We have the opportunity to use a good-size conference room that accommodate over 40 people, and we wanted to keep that element. And this configuration, if it were built for somebody else, would probably have a lot of smaller offices in that same space. We're able to use that space for the needs that we have. So that's my presentation for tonight. Leave it up to you in terms of where you want to get to this on the agenda.
Mr. Serisi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just going to ask very quickly if there's no objection from my fellow committee members if we can move this agenda up, agenda item up, and address it now, and if there's no objections to that, I'll certainly want to begin a discussion on that. I'll offer a motion to approve this agenda item, so we can enter into a discussion.
Second.
Second.
Yes, so Amy, what we've done is we've just moved this up in the agenda, so it'll be, you know, fine for you, but I'm just letting you know that we're taking it out of order. Mr. Serisi on the floor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Very, very quickly, I received a couple of emails today from both parents and teachers regarding this agenda item, and we've heard several comments tonight from the community regarding this agenda item, and I certainly understand, you first blush it, looking at this agenda item, you're trying to figure out what the rationale or what the logic is behind this, and I understand that, and if I was in a community member position, I would certainly feel the same way looking at that. I can assure you that the motivation for committee members and the administration in making this move out of the current administration building and into a building to lease has nothing to do with providing the administration with lapping luxury over there. I can tell you that, that is not the motivation. As a matter of fact, the square footage of administrative... As a matter of fact, the square footage of administrative office space that we will have at Quonset will be less than what we currently have. So it's not like we're moving into a big luxury building, uh, you know, for the administration. I can tell you what's driving this, the logic and the decision process behind this is exactly what the, the lady, the woman, uh, had mentioned earlier in her public comments. It is to divert more funding into the schools, into programs and students. I can't, I've been on this committee for eight years, I can no longer sit here and rightfully vote to approve any capital expenditures, additional capital expenditures, on this current administration building. We spend, and Mrs. King, you can correct me if I'm wrong, we spend roughly thirty thousand dollars a year there on the electric bill, it's electric heat. That's more than it costs us to heat and for our electric bills at our elementary schools. Um, in doing a prior year assessment, we're looking at approximately three hundred thousand dollars in capital improvements to that building over the next five years, roofing and several other things. I, it's like throwing bad money after more, good money after more bad money, as, as the saying goes. So, the long-term plan here is to not spend any more capital improvement money on that facility, um, because there are going to be expenditures within the next five years. I'd much prefer to vote to spend that money out at the schools, on computers, on books, on, on things of that nature, rather than on, on the roof over at this, this building here, or, or new heating system over at this building here. Um, we, it's, it's, it's a lease, there are no capital improvement overhead costs for us, uh, we're not responsible for maintenance and upkeep of the building, much like if you had leased an apartment or a condominium or something of that nature. You're not responsible for the, the roof and all those good things that go along with it. Uh, in addition, we have extended, uh, on several occasions, an invite to the town manager and the town council, uh, to look, to, uh, join us in consolidating office space and, and, and leasing space, uh, over at this building as well, so we can get all, all the town office buildings, administrative office buildings on the one roof. So, I'm sorry for taking up so much time, but it just, you know, really, as a parent of a student attending schools and as a taxpayer, it's very frustrating for me to sit here and have folks think that, uh, we're spending money, or the motivation here is to, you know, provide lap and luxury, and divert money away from the schools and into, uh, some big executive office suite, because I can tell you, that's not the goal, that's not what my, my objective is. My objective is to stop throwing money down a well on this current administration building, and stop fixing the schools, and stop providing for more technology out in the schools. Thank you.
Yes, I think Mr. Cerisi has stated, uh, something that I know is, followed among a number of us. Um, I know for years that Mr. Draper used to talk about that it would cost more to heat, um, the administration building than he would say Hamilton Elementary, that it costs, um, that, that's how inefficient this building is. We do have the, the capital improvements, like the roof and other issues with this, um, the current administration building that just aren't going to go away. So I really don't want to spend any more money on this building that was supposed to be temporary and has been permanent for-
Forty years.
Yeah, forty years, that it has outlived its usefulness, and is ready to, um, just basically not be productive and useful at all. And as Mr. Cerisi said, the, the other thing is, this is a smaller space, so, um, if other committee members wish to speak on this, feel free to raise your hand and comment. Mr. Mudge.
Uh, how come we wasn't informed of this earlier?
This has been talked about before, Mr. Mudge, and that Mr., Dr. Ojai has brought this up as to, um, when they visited over at, um, Quonset, and perhaps if you would attend some executive sessions-
Please, tell me, when was this discussion, the school committee, okay, over the last year or not?
My school committee goals.
School committee goals.
Out of my goals. The, the school committee approved.
So, you went out and spoke, and, by the way, why didn't we put an RFP out for this? A request for proposal?
We, we searched for options.
Why didn't you put on an RFP? Request for proposal?
They don't require an RFP to lease a building or lease-
Well, possibly, this is a brand-new building, possibly somebody could have provided this cheaper. Yes. Hello?
They're not required to do an RFP to lease rooms or space.
You could go out for an RFP to do that, though, couldn't you? And you could get a lower price, couldn't you? Couldn't you? Yes or no?
No.
I, I don't believe it could. No.
Well, how do you know? You didn't do it, number one. Number two-
We did, we did assert. Yes, we did.
And remember, Mr. Mudge, this was done with the town manager.
So now you're just, now you're just informing us you did a search, and today you want us to come in and pass this thing overnight?
We've been informed, you haven't come to the meetings.
No, I've been to the meetings.
And you've been informed through Dr. Ojai-
No, 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 I don't get inform- When is the public going to be informed? When were they going to be informed? And by the way, okay, we supposedly, and we did it unethically, okay, we, we approved one point two million dollars for Davisville Elementary School, okay? You know how many square feet that we said we were doing? I'd like to read this, please.
What does that got to do with our discussion about, about this?
I will tell you, be quiet.
What, what is, what does that have to do with us talking? That is not, that is not pertinent to our discussion right here.
Both certainly is.
No, it's not.
All right.
I demand that be heard.
I'm gonna give Mr. Mudge a little bit of latitude, but Mr. Mudge, bring it back to the motion at the end.
Tell you, I'm, tell you exactly why. Davisville Elementary School, okay, this is a memo from us, uh, to Potch, to, uh, Dr., uh, excuse me, uh, De Silva. Joe, as you know, Davisville Elementary School is a school that is designed for special needs students, which accommodate children from kindergarten through high school. I cannot provide, I cannot provide a gross square foot per student value for this facility to compare it to section one oh two point six of the Ride Construction Regulation requirements. But I can provide the proposed average classroom size and maximum pupil count for each type of special education class, i.e. elementary, middle, and high school, to achieve a net, a net square foot value per pupil for rides of you. Ten people, okay? Ten students, seven hundred and fifty square feet, those elementary, middle school, ten students, eight hundred and thirty-two, high school, ten students, eight hundred and thirty-seven. That is, excuse me, that is thirty children, okay? Twenty-four hundred square feet of classroom space, and we don't have room? We couldn't look at putting the administration over there? That was talked about too, wasn't it? Didn't we talk about that? Well, why didn't we talk, look at that? Why didn't we look at that?
We, we do have administration moving into that building.
No, no.
Some, some of the, I just, I just explained to you, some of the, the offices from us-
We got a forty thousand square foot-
With the clinical day program there, they would not fit.
We, it, it is absolutely-
Mr. Mudge, when you ask the question, you need to wait and listen to the answer-
We have forty thousand square foot building, and we couldn't find office space for you? That's ludicrous.
So I'm gonna ask you to listen to the answer, and then you may respond to that.
The answer is no good, because they admitted it, we couldn't justify it to ride, right here. Why didn't we look at that?
Bill, I don't know what you're reading.
I'm reading a letter that I got when I went to Ride's office this week.
And you're making no sense right now.
No, I went to Ride's office, excuse me, and I picked this up, and this was the, this was April twenty-ninth, one forty PM. I went and got this from Ride's office this week. So we've been talking about Ride up here, twenty-four hundred square foot of classroom space we needed for these kids, and we got a forty thousand square foot building, and we didn't even consider the administration going over there? This is outrageous.
Mr. Mudge, I think you've just been told that the pu-, um, the special education is going over to him.
I'm telling you, I've been told that, but it doesn't make sense, and you can't justify the building with that, for thirty kids, thirty children going to Davisville Elementary School, and you've got a forty thousand square foot building?
Do you have to yell, Bill?
Yeah.
Can you talk?
Yeah. Does that answer your question?
You have to yell.
Yeah, 'cause I'm a little upset, okay?
All right, is there somebody else who has a question about the-
So, I'm not done yet.
Well, you're, you're getting off the point of the motion on the table.
Okay, I want to know why an RFP wasn't put out for this space.
I answered the question.
You didn't answer the question. Why wasn't the school committee first requested then, okay, to review this to see if we wanted to go out? Did we have any other suggestions? Any other alternatives? Now you're telling us we're gonna modify the, the, uh-
They have a proposal in front of you.
Have you given us a life cycle proposal of this cost, of what the detailed costs were? I haven't seen it. I haven't seen any cost at all. By the way, you're talking about electricity. The high school's spending three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year alone on electricity, and we've done nothing about that. We could be saving money there if we improved our, uh, efficiency and lighting system there. Come on, let's get our priorities straight. This is a shame.
Is there someone else that would like to, to speak on this matter, or ask questions? Mr. Jones?
Um, thank you. Just as a matter of record, Bill, I, I actually pointed out a few buildings for the administration to go research, um, on Post Road and other places, um, and they came back and said that both the functionality and the per, you know, cost was, uh, more expensive in terms of cost and less functional than the Quonset one, so.
But Bob, we didn't see anything in writing. I never saw anything in writing. Did we get anything in writing from anybody by putting an RFP out and seeing if people would, you know, submit something in writing?
Well, I, no, I'm not gonna go over this thing. I mean, I, I'll be one of the ones who brought this up over a year ago, when I asked, as part of this committee, that along with IT and other items to look at, at finding alternative ways of doing things. I, I would categorize this, I think Mr. Cerisi really spoke in depth about some of the things I would have said, but to address some points, you know, it's not, since Mr. Cerisi addressed some of the higher-level points, I, I mean, it's an embarrassment that we have kids going to register at the D building. I mean, really?
Why did they have to register there? There's plenty of space at the administration building.
I mean, and, and to say, to ask that we're gonna have kids registered at Davisville Academy when it has another function, I don't think makes much sense either. I, I mean, the point is that, in addition to the capital points that were pointed out, I mean, we, we're in discussions, part of the issue is, is our physical security and other stuff, the central administration building, those are even costs we haven't even discussed yet, um, because our schools are gonna take higher priority in terms of security. But to bring some of those security items up at our main administrative building, where we have records and we have high priority traffic, I think are costs that weren't even addressed by Mr. Cerisi in, in thinking about the roofs and other things. I mean, the point is, is that, and I liken this to, you know, our, our high school stadium and the turf field, where on the surface, we're saying, yes, would I put money in there when I have other stuff? No, I wouldn't. But when you look at the cost avoidance and the direct return from that specific location, it starts to make a lot of sense.
You haven't seen that, Bob.
And I, I just think, I, Bill, I, again, I won't go, the, the costs were detailed out in the thing, you know, we're rolling the dice when we say, maybe we can go five more years without the roof going in. We don't know all the things that could happen in that building. You know, the point is that, as a town, at some point, we have to sort of sit and go, fifty years ago, this town made some strategic decisions to invest in education. Those have life cycles, great idea, but they come in bunches. You know, at some point, if we just keep rolling the dice, and rolling the dice, and rolling the dice, our technology and our pedagogy that we want to teach our kids for a 21st-century education and everything else is gonna be for waste, because our facilities aren't keeping up with it.
I'm not talking like that.
As a town, let me finish, Bill. And as a town, I mean, we've talked about in other venues and the committee before me, that we'd like to see greater collaboration and consolidation between us and the town. One of the first steps would be is to put both of them in the same spot, and I think it's a shame that, on the town side, you know, just because of the circumstances, it's not. But I'm hoping that over the next three to five years, this can be part of a larger discussion to say, a 21st-century town can have a joint and consolidated municipal and school function in one location. I mean, it just makes sense. And so if we don't start doing these kinds of things, and, and I hear the concerns of, of, uh, John and, and, and the other speakers, but I echo again what Mr. Cerisi said. You know, I have kids in this system, I'm a taxpayer, I would not support this if it didn't make sense financially first, you know, let alone, and then if you take a look at the things, you will see, you know, the superintendent's office is actually being reduced by an order of forty percent or fifty percent, I forget. Um, so in terms of some of that, and, and I just think that, and we just put over a hundred thousand, I wish we could put more, in, into some of the other needs that our schools have in terms of office equipment or other stuff. But I mean, to, to sit here and think that we're just throwing fifty thousand more a year into this ignores the fact that we're just rolling the dice on a kind of expected probability calculation, that we're not gonna actually be spending a lot more on that building in the future. And I, for one, would rather be a little risk averse and take something we know, we have locked in costs, has clear functional capability and benefits to us, instead of rolling the dice that we're gonna be putting hundreds of thousands into that central administration building a few years from now, when we're in the midst of putting new computers in all our schools, when we're in the midst of upgrading some other stuff. So I just think it makes sense.
You're, you're assuming that this building is gonna collapse in a couple of years. If, if we had to move this administration office tomorrow, we could probably have a leased space in North Kingston within two weeks. We could have leased space. So we're jumping ahead here, saying, well, the roof might fall in, the roof might fall in, let's spend this money for five years. Regarding the town, let them take the initiative. Wickford Elementary School, Wickford Elementary School's been closed for ten years, and nothing's happened. So we're gonna go in and jump into this thing? For what? If we can, if we can do something in two years, why don't we have a plan with the town? We'll stay here for another year or two, let's come up with a plan, and then see what we're gonna do. But we're just gonna go out and spend this? You know, this is, it, it's not well thought out at all. And you're saying, oh, the building might go down, it might fail tomorrow. Well, I submit, I, and I've seen it before, and I've been part of it, we could be outrunning space in North Kingston within a week, okay? And if we had to, we could move to Davisville Elementary School as a temporary measure. We have forty thousand square feet of space, and we're not using it properly. And by the way, Davisville Elementary School, we didn't certify any documentation for that with the state, not one. We didn't approve one.
All right, we're all getting off topic now, Mr. Cerisi.
Phase one, phase two, phase three of that project.
Mr. Mudge, I'm gonna ask you-
You don't know what you're talking about.
I do know what I'm talking about, because I went through the records. There was no records of a phase one, two, or three-
We have a motion on the table.
-being approved by the school.
If I recall, I think you're like oh for fourteen now, aren't you?
Is that right?
I'm pretty sure.
Okay, we're, we're going down-
What are you?
That's enough.
That's oh for fourteen.
Let me ask you something, you're so smart.
I'm cutting off the mics. Okay, that's enough. That's enough, folks. We are off the topic of the motion on the floor. We have a motion on the floor, Mr. Mudge. I'm not asking you to, to-
He's pretty smart, I have his report.
That's right, and I cut off the mic for both of you. No, I've cut off the mic for both of you. Stop it, Mr. Mudge. Mr. Mudge, that is enough.
Committee- The roofs were failing at Davisville, at Essent, and at Stony Lane. You knew the roofs were failing, and you never told the community.
It's the guy who didn't want the roof reported.
All right.
Davisville. At Essent Elementary School and Stony Lane, the roofs were failing, and you as a committee member failed to notify the community.
Mr. Mudge, that's enough. Mr. Mudge, that is enough.
How does he?
You are off topic.
Am I wrong, or am I right?
I think you wrote for fourteen, right?
Okay.
Were those roofs failing, sir? Were those kids jumping out?
Look, do we need to take a five-minute break here? Do I have a motion to take a five-minute break? Do I, the, yes, okay, I have a, I make a second, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, Mr. Biscarton?
Aye.
Thank you.
That's it.
We'll take a five-minute break.
I'm not, I go.
One, we're back in session, and, um, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Biscarton?
I would just like to commend, uh, the administration for, for moving forward on, um, this, the new administration building. I think it's a, it's a vital move to, um, for the school district, as a district, to, to maintain its place in the state as being the, you know, consistently one, consistently one of the top five in the state, so, nice job, Mary. I need to put a lot of work into it, thank you very much, and you as well, Doctor.
Thank you. Mr. Cerisi?
I'm sorry, I don't want to belabor the discussion, but I did, uh, forget to mention one point that, uh, Dr. Ojai touched on briefly. If my memory serves me correct, I want to say about six months ago, roughly, the school committee, um, outlined, uh, the annual goals and objectives, uh, for the superintendent to achieve as part, as part of his job performances, and our annual goals and objectives that we lay out for him to achieve, and that we, we evaluate him on annually as part of his performance. And one of those goals, if my memory serves me correct, was, was to look for-
to look for an alternative location for the central office administration building. Yes. And again, the rationale was financial, to not continue to spend money on capital improvements year after year on this current building, and to look for a long-term plan, leasing plan, where we didn't have capital improvements overhead to worry about, where we could focus that attention of capital improvements expenditures on the school buildings and on the classrooms and on the students. So this is, contrary to what we've heard tonight, this is not new. This is not a conspiracy theory. This is something that the committee has been discussing and has tasked the administration with well over six months ago. Unfortunately, in those planning meetings of goals and objectives and job performance for the superintendent that the six of us attended, our seventh committee member, Mr. Mudge, did not attend.
Which is coincidentally why he was not aware of what was going on. So if all you are clapping for Mr. Mudge, be aware that he's not, he attends very little planning meetings and really knows nothing what's going on.
So, so those, those meetings did take place several months ago, and it wasn't one meeting at five minutes to midnight. They were several meetings. So, I just wanted to clarify that point. Thank you.
Are there any other comments? All right, we have a motion on the floor and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Right.
Bill, go ahead.
That brings us to our consent agenda. There are two things for our consent agenda. The administration has asked us to pull D10. Amy, that's D10 that we're taking off of the agenda. And the other correction that needs to be made is for D1, for approval of high school advisors under the best buddies. It should read Sue Graham, not Chris Graham.
Is it the other way around? No, it's the other way around.
Sorry, let me just make sure of that. I think it's Chris Graham. I'm not sure though. I think it's Chris. I'll be emailing here.
I think it's, yeah, last year, last year it was Mr. Fanning and Mrs. Graham, and I believe it was Sue Graham.
Okay, so we'll call it Mrs. Graham and play it safe. Not Sue, not Sue or Chris.
That's true, we could.
Got it, I got it. I'll go back and teach you to be main players.
Well, while we're looking at that, is there anything else that needs to be exempted from the consent agenda?
No.
Yes.
It should be Sue Graham and Paul Fanning and not Chris Graham.
Okay, all right. So yes, that's, as I said, it should be Sue Graham and Paul Fanning for best buddies and not Chris Graham. I believe Mr. Fanning is already on there for best buddies. Okay, so those are our amendments. Is there anything else to exempt from the consent agenda? Mr. Jones?
I would like to exempt D1 for comment and E.
Can you repeat that, please, Mr. Jones?
I'm sorry, D1 and then E, but I guess E1. There's only one thing under E, but E1.
Anything else? All right, do I have a motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. All right, so that brings us to the first item that was exempted was D1. Mr. Jones?
Thank you. I'll first make a motion to approve D1.
Second.
Thank you. My point in exempting D1 is not to go over any individual one, it's, some things with consent agendas get, you know, approved, and unless you take the time to read it, you miss some of the points. And I'd like to just point out to D1 that it sort of shows the breadth and depth of enrichment activities that we provide at the high school. And I think it's important, and obviously there's a cost to that, but I think it's important that the community realizes the amount of enrichment activities that are available for our students. And I would also ask maybe Dr. Roget to work with the high school administration and to the extent we are, maybe start capturing, whether it's end-of-year reports or quick summaries or just things, so we get an even better sense of the, the level of involvement of students and individual clubs and activities, and maybe just some brief overviews of, of what they did. I know we, we get it here and there with like the robotics club or other stuff, but I know, you know, the, the level of enrichment that goes on is, is really terrific, and it's nice to sort of have records of that, just besides what's the students and the individual administrators and teachers and staff who, who support those know.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
And actually, if I might, Mr. Jones, we had, we had asked the principals to make sure that they are asking the advisors to keep track of enrollment and that kind of thing this year, so that, you know, we do have that information to provide.
Are there any further comments or questions? If not, we have a motion on the table, so those, all those in favor of approving D1, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. All right, that brings us to E. Mr. Jones?
Yes, thank you. I guess motion to approve E. Second, thank you. The reason I exempted E is again, sort of this gets buried in the consent agenda, and I want to, if the committee will bear with me for hopefully just a couple of minutes, to highlight this issue. I appreciate the superintendent for taking the initiative and being proactive with this, to address this with the commissioner, and I hope some of our other, either general assembly folks or town councils and others in terms of this issue. And if you didn't get a chance to, to look at it, it addresses the, the expansion of the, one of the charter schools in our, really in our neighborhood, that our community sends a significant number of, of children to. If you take a brief look at the RIDE website, as I did, there's, I counted 18 independent charter schools. The state average for free and reduced lunch population is 47% across the state. If you look at the charter schools, 15 of them are well above 47%. They range from almost 80-something percent to one that is just right at the state average. If you look at the three schools that are in our region, they are respectively at 25%, we have Kingston Hill at 21%, and the Compass School at 6%. Those are, are levels well below the socioeconomic demographics that I think charter schools were meant to address, and clearly that over 85% of the rest of the, of the state's charter schools are addressing. And furthermore, if you go to those things and look at some of the comparable things, for example, at the Compass School, chronic absenteeism is twice what our corresponding Wickford Middle School has. If you look at the kneecap scores, Wickford Middle School, 91% in math and reading, Compass School, 89 and 74 respectively. If you look at fifth grade at Kingston Hill, 76 in math, 86 in reading. Look at some of the comparable schools our students would be going to if that school didn't exist, whether it's Hamilton at 86 and 94, Stony Lane at 89 and 96, even Quinesse at our Title I school, which I got to say is really reflective of the good work that the staff and faculty do at Quinesse, at 78 and 87% higher than the, the local charter school at the, at the fifth grade level. And I don't mean to ignore Forest Park and Fishing Cove, I just don't have that data in front of me. My point in all this, if you want to talk about giving resources to our students, you know, we're talking about 50,000, you know, and that's assuming nothing falls apart the thing. We could fund full-day kindergarten if the, if we didn't, weren't sending 3/4 of a million dollars a couple miles over to a school, and this is not a knock on those schools, they, they teach the kids they get and they, and they do a great job doing it. But those kids would get as good or better an education in our district, and we're sending almost a million dollars over there. That's your full-day kindergarten. That's your computers in your classrooms. That's your extra teachers to reduce class size. And I think it's just not been, it's not been picked up by the press, it's not been picked up by the community, that what gets sort of lost in the sort of school choice and other things, which in general I support, is that the reason for alternative public schools, these public schools we're talking about, is to provide a different educational model for those kids who are needed. We have terrific schools here that are doing it, and it's a shame that because perhaps it offers slightly different hours or slightly different other things, that we are giving up a million dollars a year. So again, for community members who are outraged or worried or concerned, you know, that maybe 30, 40,000 isn't going to the students, you're talking 20 to 25 times that, that's going just a few miles away. And I think it's an issue that I'm glad the superintendent is addressing. I hope the commissioner sort of can see through the, the forest and the trees in terms of the purpose of, of charter schools versus the impact it has on districts like ours. So I will get off my soapbox and thank the committee for giving me the five minutes to do that. But again, I think if you're looking at an area where you want money to come back to here, talk to, you know, talk to your local representatives about why there's such an inequity in terms of the charter schools in the north versus the ones down in here, that won't even get into the fact that state law says that charter schools are supposed to neither have financial incentive or disincentive. Those schools are running a 30% profit margin. Boy, if we could do that, A, the town council would, would have our hide, but B, we could offer both significant tax relief to our citizens as well as upping the amount of educational opportunity we provide. So again, when we think about where dollars go that could support us, this is an area that the state needs to relook at, and the commissioner hopefully specifically with, with those schools as it impacts North Kingston.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Cerisi?
Just a very quick comment. I just want to thank Mr. Jones for stating that so clearly and eloquently. And he's absolutely right. It is, that's where the real, real news is, that's where the real money is, that's where the real story is, and I think that's something that the, the local press or papers would, would hopefully look at a little bit closer and a little bit more detail, because I think when you start talking about where do our tax dollars go, there's really a lot there to cover. And I would, would encourage you to, to contact the superintendent or Mr. Jones on that topic, as I know they've both spent a lot of time and effort in researching it, so.
All right, we have a motion on the table and a second. All those in favor of approving the superintendent's letter to the commissioner, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. All right, that brings us to the end of the consent agenda and the, to unfinished business. And the first item we have is approval of the capital improvement program.
I'll let Mrs. King give some summary remarks.
Actually, I would like to, I just want to make two changes, and I'll communicate those to you, and I'll send you a revised spreadsheet. When I was going over this tonight before the meeting, I noted two things. If you look at the one-line item that's noted as sidewalks and parking lots, those two amounts, the $20,000 in 2016 and 2017, need to come up to $50,000 in each of those years, as recommended by the facility subcommittee.
Excellent.
And then the next item, the unleaded UST tank removal needs to go down to $50,000. So in whole, it really doesn't change the bottom line a heck of a lot, but I did want to communicate that, and I will make that change because I want to send that appropriately to the asset management committee. So what we sent to you is pretty similar to last year. I have a cover memo explaining what each of the line items are, and then we have an Excel spreadsheet that might be a little bit easier for us to look at, as opposed to the forms that the asset management committee likes to see. And a lot of these items are really the same items we had from last year. Many of them do have some basis in, in the estimates, are solid estimates. Some of them, we, we just are not able to go out and get estimates on until we're really looking to do the work. We've provided for you what's in progress, what's projected for 2015, and then we went five years out. Items that we've talked about, electricity upgrade, electrical panel upgrades, security upgrades, the remainder of the health and safety and ADA compliance that were not part of the $6.4 million bond, masonry needs, window updates, boiler at Hamilton, floor covering, turf, roof replacements, lockers, gym floors. It's the whole gamut here. And, and as you all understand, I'm kind of preaching to the choir here, as we move out, our buildings continue to get older. There continue to be latest and greatest needs. I did not prioritize these in a one-through, I don't know, 45 or however many items we have on here. We group them instead by big categories, one through four. So I'm glad to answer any questions on this. The facility subcommittee has gone over this again this year, approved it, really liked the look of it. They really like that we have some solid information on, by line item, instead of just larger buckets of money with no real information behind them. And the next step will be that this will be sent, the, the facility subcommittee recommends that this is sent to the town council at the same time that this is sent to the asset management committee. I'll be pending a meeting with the town asset management committee in mid-November, which is the timeframe that they usually look at the school side, and then they present something to the town council in January. The facility subcommittee has recommended that we submit this to the town at the same time, and perhaps consider getting a, a forum in front of the town council as well.
So do I have a motion on the, or can I have a motion about the capital improvement Mr. Biscarton, are you going to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve it.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All right.
I just wanted to.
So let's, let's discuss it more.
I just wanted to thank.
It's scaring me down now.
It's close.
Hello.
I'm sorry, I drifted off. It's my fault. I just, I was, I was thinking, I was looking at number 21 there, roof replacements, and that's all my fault. We're replacing those roofs because that's all my fault, all right? I just want to make sure everybody knows that. Thank you for your hard work, Mary. You put a lot of effort into this, and everything is very clear. Every year you get, that I've sat on the facility subcommittee, you get, you get more detailed, and the information is more, is more clear and easy to read. I just want to thank you because it, by doing that, it eliminates a lot of questions.
Thank you. We do learn as we go along.
I just want to also thank Mrs. King for her work in outlining all of this. And when you put it all together, you really see, you know, something that we were talking about earlier. Adding all this up comes up to more than $22 million in needs that we have right now facing the, the buildings that we have in the district. $22 million. So, you know, to, it is, it is our responsibility as leaders in this district to look long-term, to, you know, how many kids are we going to be educating? What kind of configurations do we have? And how do we do that most efficiently? That we, you know, that we need to get right on the long-term planning piece. The central office is a piece of that, but, you know, these, these needs face all of our buildings, and they're all getting older, and they're all very old, or some of them are extremely old, and all of them are showing wear. And it's, it would be foolish of us to feel like, well, we can go several years without maintaining them. That's just simply not the case. We need things, and we need to keep an eye on this piece. And, and I'm just hoping that all of the powers that be after this election can really sit down and take a good, long, responsible look at long-term planning and making the commitments that are needed to address these kinds of concerns.
Are there any further comments or questions on the capital improvement plan? Well, I would agree, this has been, it is very thorough. I appreciate the work that is going in there from Mr. Biscarton with your facilities committee and Mrs. King. is going in there from Mr. Biscarton with your facilities committee, Mrs. King, for putting all this together. And it is a sort of thing, it's our plan, so it doesn't mean that everything, unfortunately, that we have the funding or the viability to be able to do all of these things, but it is what we consider our priorities of what need to be fixed, and the order that things should be fixed in. So that is what we're voting on here tonight, and we'll take that vote now. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. All right, so that brings us to the next item on our agenda, which is policies. This is the Office of Family Learning Benefits. This is a second read for this policy, and we took a look at it last time, where we discussed that this group did not fall under any particular category, and so we wanted to make sure that we specified as to what their benefits were. Are there any questions on that? Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. All right, seeing no hands, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, great, motion carries. That brings us to the end. I don't believe there is any new business on our agenda for this evening, so I would take the motion to adjourn.
Second.
So moved first.
So moved, that's right.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much, and good evening, everybody. Have a nice night.